Okay, I'd like to call the December 4th, 2023 meeting for the City Council of the City of Lake City at order. If everyone would stand for the collective leaders and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity together, conduct the business of our city. Thank you for this season, what it all represents with Thanksgiving and Christmas, and what they mean to everyone. We ask that you look after our communities, guide us in our deliberations tonight that what we do is for the betterment of our community, look after our citizens, our first responders, and our troops, and your name we pray. That's all. We come to our.
Mr. Dernigan?
President.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Chief Butler?
Here.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meeting. As I think sixty-eight, the city codes prohibited any person from making personal or pertinent slander or remark or becoming boisterous while addressing the council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience might seek boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There is only one approved manner of addressing the city council. That is to be recognized and speak from the podium. As was reminded, persons who do not openly carry a handgun or carry concealed weapon or firearm while the governing body is meeting.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion or recommendation, please?
Sure.
This is a form of request. I notice you read this every meeting that we have about the firearms and the slander and all this boisterous comments. What happens to the person that violates this? I do not see that anywhere in there because obviously it's been violated in the past and probably will be violated again. I want to know what happens to the person that violates this statement.
I don't know that it says it exactly, but I guess it's supposed to from the meeting. But this is something that we do need a workshop on, and there's a couple of items I'm aware of that have been proposed as amendments to our decorum, and I'd like to add and say that maybe that'd be a good thing to put on the first meeting in January.
The decorum of the conference?
So, so a person can bring a firearm in here, they could still yell and scream?
No, no, if they bring a firearm, they're removed.
Yeah. But, okay, but what about the, when we come up, you know, we're here and we get a comment from the audience that considers yelling disrespectful, what happens to that person until January?
We'll deal with it.
We're going to deal with it. Okay, Mayor, thank you.
All right, we don't have a proclamation. We have minutes for November twentieth's regulation.
May I move to approve the minutes for regulation of November twenty-second regulation?
Okay, let's see. Okay, so my motion is second, our favor is out. On approval of the agenda, I have a couple of amendments. I've been asked to add item nineteen, which is the Springs Grant for twenty-four, twenty-five that is going to be spoken to shortly, and it's time sensitive, so it needs to be put on, some assets be put on item eight. And I think everybody's got a copy of that, I didn't know if anybody really got. The other thing is item eighteen has been requested to be moved up prior to item four. And it's been requested that that be for discussion only, it's not for action. And I think that's the only correction I'm aware of. Those corrections, is there a motion?
Should be item twenty instead of nineteen? Just mayor or?
Item, is, item nineteen will be the Springs Grant, item twenty will be approval of the job description. Is there a motion?
So, move it, Mayor.
Second.
My motion is second to approve the agenda, demand that all the favors are.
Aye.
Favored?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that that was added as an emergency item on the Springs Grant, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was in agreement with that as an emergency item, and I need to put that in the motion.
Can I get a copy of that?
And when it gets brought up and motion made, it's got to be done.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear the mayor's statement. When it's brought up as an emergency, what was your last?
When the motion's made, there are certain statements that have to be made of why we're voting on it tonight. Mr. Cannon can guide us on that. You have to state that there's a reason that it didn't get put on the agenda. Okay, person's participating, public participation. Mr. Knoll's here about an item on the consent agenda, if he wants to speak briefly to it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Knoll. I reside at twelve forty-nine Southwest Ridge Street, Lake City, Florida. I'm here representing Lake City Columbia Community Tennis Association. As you all probably know, we have been running the tennis facilities there in Young's Park for the last couple of years since the city built the facilities, and we're much appreciative of the improvements that have been made there in the park to provide for tennis for young people as well as adults. Our organization's been very successful in securing grants to continue to add equipment and assets to the facility. We recently received a grant from the county to put up the shade structure over the bleachers that are there in front of the sets of tennis courts, and we would be much grateful, appreciative of having a shade structure so that our spectators and parents can sit there and watch the kids participate during these events. So, it's on your consent agenda, but we just want to say thank you on behalf of our organization, and love to see the improvements continue there at Young's Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this time I'm going to read a statement from Reverend Graham that she provided. She had to be, had a, she couldn't afford it tonight, so she's asked me to read this to the record. It says, "Mayor Witt, Lake City Council members and citizens of Lake City, good evening. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting. I would like to address the issue of the reconsideration of Mr. Paul Dow being rehired in his position as city manager. I appreciate your willingness to read this statement into tonight's record of the meeting. As I constipate, that this request has even been brought before the city council and the citizens of Lake City. Mr. Dow made a conscious choice to resign. There also appears to be a question as to whether or not this is the first time he has resigned from a position and subsequently asked to return after whatever reason other things did not work out for him. If it is so, then this is not the first time he has resigned and asked for his job. He is beginning to show a pattern of using Lake City for job security. I'm seriously concerned that the person who gave Mr. D. Johnson glowing recommendations on his ability to handle this position two months or so later applied for the position himself, possibly without Mr. Johnson's knowledge. In other words, behind his back. If one steps back for a moment and takes an overall view of what has occurred with this request to be brought before the city council, it stands to be systematic racism and salesmanship. It seems odd that on the one hand, we are told, "Mr. Johnson, you happen to be an African-American man and handled the job well." Within two months, the person who gave him glowing recommendations kind of fact says he wants a six-figure job back and given consideration of his request. A yes vote on this ridiculous request is suggesting Mr. Johnson is capable of doing his job, and the city has to be rescued by Mr. Dow. Apparently, he's the only person in America who has the capability to be manager of Lake City. I would strongly suggest that the following refer, Mr. Johnson's continuous position as interim manager of Lake City is strongly recommended by Mr. Paul Dow, that a search committee is hired as soon as possible. Mr. Dow has reminded that he can submit his application to the search committee, compete as the American way, and if he is qualified, as he continues to represent himself, when he will rise to the top and get the job. However, if when faced with the competition for other persons who submitted their application or properly vetted and meet the qualifications for the job he has not selected, then so be it. At that point, when the selection committee does not select Mr. Dow again, that's the end of the story. Mr. Dow should not further be considered because he has decided that he would like to have the six-figure job back. We're all responsible for accepting the consequences of our choices. I feel badly that things did not work out for him as anticipated. The city council should take time to look into the matter to determine how this request came before the council to determine if it meets the correct standard of consulting with all the members of the council prior to bringing up an issue. Seems odd that Mr. Johnson may have found out about the idea that someone is going after his job through a courtesy call rather than the individual who affirmed over and over again, "Mr. Johnson is well qualified for the job." It suggests that Mr. Dow slipped in under the cover of darkness behind Mr. Johnson's back and asked to be reconsidered for rehire. If he would do that to Mr. Johnson, what are you going to do to him? The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. Mr. Dow's decision-making has shown a pattern of instability, self-instinctive motives, and disloyalty to the city of Lake City. It is unfathomable that the city council would even consider for one nanosecond his request. The council response should be a resounding no thank you. He told you thirty, for thirty minutes that he did not want the job. You gave him every opportunity you possibly to come back, and he still said no. A yes answer to this ridiculous request shows a lack of decision-making capabilities, a lack of concern for the citizens of Lake City, and raises questions about any ulterior motives and or personal secondary gain for reinstating him to a six-figure position. He has said twice he does not want. He made the choice to resign from the six-figure job, let it be so. Respectfully submitted Reverend Dr. Pam Gregory. And so that is next. My next one is Mr. Blandell Mountain.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Since the last time we met, you all know that there's been another murder. So, there's two murders within four months, a twelve-year-old and a nineteen-year-old gone. Might have been a lawyer, doctor, anything, chief, might have found a cure for six, seven, eight, who knows? But I think it's important that we keep that in mind, you know, we, God knows when you do your prayer, Mayor, you pray for first responders and all of that, but I think it's important from time to time that you mention in your prayer, if you have to write it out, some of the issues that happen in our community, and like the death of young people in our community, those are, those are, is the words that, that mention. I often tell you how to pray, but I would hope that people be a little more sensitive to the violence that's taken based in our community, because it's a painful time for some folk. Just riding down Long Street, but I'm headed to the cemetery, I passed by one house with a twelve-year-old, see, I get to the end of Long Street, a nineteen-year-old shot to death there in the middle of the night. So, I just want to bring that up. Now, Mayor, I'm going to use these other two minutes to talk about something that's on the agenda, I'm going to speak to it when we get that up, but I won't have enough time. I remember standing, Mr. Dow sitting right there where Mr. Johnson sitting there a few months ago, and he talked about how Mr. Johnson can do his job, he's qualified to do it, he got all kinds of confidence in him doing it. And in fact, I went back, someone told me, go back and look at the tape, he even said that Mr. Johnson was more qualified than him. So, having said all of that, Mayor, I just do not understand what would be reasonable to even accept Mr. Dow back as the city manager. I personally would give it as a slap in the face. Mr. Johnson may not be offended, but as a black man, I'm offended because they've been told he can do the job, he's qualified to do the job, and now the former city manager said, "Well, I want my job back." But what happened between the time that Mr. Dow left and the time that he decided he wanted to come back? You know, two weeks, okay, I made a mistake, but two months was some time to think about it. And I think it's some dangerous message, Mayor, and a bad message, when you start deciding somebody can leave, oh, when he want to come back, bring him back. But what that says to employees, what that says to the community of the city managing association, who would be interested even considering coming to Lake City when the city council can't make a decision? It's time now for this council to make a decision about the management of this community. You got some options. One option is to keep Mr. Johnson in a position of influence, city manager. And you're awkward to say to him, if the issue is education, you can decide that we're going to keep you as interim city manager. I think I heard the city attorney says that there's no qualification written for being an interim. So, you don't have to have no education, you can have none of that to me, he can be the interim. And allow him twelve, eighteen months to get his college education. That may be, people complain about, obviously, the other thing, Mayor, is that how to search for him? And Mrs. Johnson stays the interim city manager, doing the entire search period, and when the search period is over, he may or may not find a city manager, but in the meantime, he would have got some more and more experience. If you decide on city manager, and you can't tell the city manager what to have, but you still can influence the city manager to keep Mr. Johnson around at the time. That's the option, but you cannot, Mayor, ignore what the charter says and what the code says. If the charter clearly says, I said, I'm not going to bother you for a minute, I'll speak to it when they come back here.
Okay. Barbara Landley.
My first concern is the fowl, the bird, the ducks, the geese, whatever these little creatures are called. There seems to be an overabundance of them. They used to be around the lake, now they go down Church Street. I bought property on Monroe Street, and they were actually getting near my house, and I hope the council decides to do something with all these birds, or ducks, or geese, the fowl. They just need to go away, or at least decrease their numbers. And the other issue I have is the council needs to look at the land developer regulations. I won't get into that. I discussed something with Mr. Sampson the other day, that they need to be updated and changed. And my last area of concern is very similar to the two previous comments about rehiring Mr. Dow. I have friends that don't live here in the area. I sometimes tell them what's going on, and they said that Lake City's kind of a laughing stock, and you guys need to get your acts together and decide which path you're going to let someone resign and then think about rehiring them. You know, what about the severance package you got? If you rehire him, does he have to give money back for a severance package? I don't know about the finances on that, but obviously, things didn't work out for him, and you guys would actually make Lake City a laughing stock if you considered and gave him the opportunity to be rehired. Thank you.
Okay, and I have got another complaint about the ducks recently. Mr. Lilker.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm a little late. Is this, this item of Mr. Dow's, where is that, is that moved? Has that been moved on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
To where?
After item three, four, four.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of questions about Mr. Dow's severance. I really wasn't paying any attention to what was going on with Mr. Dow. I sent it to the city clerk today, and they answered it, forwarded it to you guys, and to the attorney's office. I don't, I looked at his contract, I put it all together, I separated the different parts, but most importantly, I listened to what went on when Mr. Kennedy explained his contract, and I said, "Okay." As long as nobody on the city council has a dream about Mr. Dow getting severance pay and mentions it at the city council, he's not getting severance pay. So, then I look at the agreement, the adjustment that was at the end, that the council never approved, they approved blank numbers that you signed, months and months after that, this city council never approved, that basically gives Mr. Dow sixteen weeks of severance pay. I don't understand how that got there. Well, I understand how it got there because the whole city council approved a blank agreement with no numbers in there. I had to, I could probably defend the law firm on paying it out, but clearly, the intent of the city council when Mr. Dow resigned, severance, severance, if you look at the dictionary, like if you go to Iraq or Afghanistan and you steal a loaf of bread, they sever your hand so you don't do it again. That's severance, it's done. When Mr. Dow left, he resigned. That's done, it's finished. How now that discount that this city is giving Mr. Dow of, really, all of Florida taxpayers wanting, three thousand dollars a week for sixteen weeks? My understanding is, on the finance side of it, he's also accumulating sick leave and vacation pay and time off, which is why he hasn't been paid one hundred and fifty-eight thousand or whatever it is yet. But if you read that adjustment, it doesn't say he gets paid for that. If you read it, it doesn't say he gets paid for that, it says what he gets paid for. And in order, if it says what you're going to do, then you don't do what it doesn't say it says you're supposed to do. And it says he's supposed to get paid for his sick leave, and that's not sick leave for his health insurance and dental and whatever it says. It doesn't say he gets severance pay, and apparently, that forty-five thousand dollars or whatever it is, plus another thirty percent of benefits, which is coming out of Columbia, coming out of taxpayers' pockets, was never approved by the city council, and I don't believe that the other understood that. And my other question is, which I don't know, and maybe Mr. Kennedy can help us out on this, is that you signed that agreement, that final payout agreement, to me, it did, when I said you, you did, and I mean no disrespect, you signed it, and it's dated the twenty-seventh of, or the seventh of October, whatever the date is at the end. I don't, what authorized you to sign that?
Okay, anyway, we're, we're, we're.
So, that's the question that I have. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Okay, Shannon Williams, about this grant that we put on the agenda.
Do you want to talk on it when it comes up?
Does she want to talk on it when it comes up, or now?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. Okay, that's all the people I have, so we'll move the consent agenda, item two, is there a motion to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve his consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second, our favor is out.
Aye.
Favored? Okay, Mr. Cannon, Form Six, for elected officials.
Yes, there's been a change in the law for this board of council that is effective January one of twenty twenty-four, and as many of you recall, you're required to fill out a, previously, a Form One financial disclosure. And previously, the statute had listed city commission, I mean, city council members, state attorneys, et cetera, that had to fill out the Form Six, but y'all were exempted from that requirement. So, effective January one, twenty twenty-four, you're now required to file the Form Six. Has to be filed, I think, by July one of twenty twenty-four, and it's a snapshot of your financial situation as of, excuse me, the last day of December twenty twenty-three or a date that you pick earlier. The main differences in the Form One and Form Six are the thresholds. Form One, for instance, lumping personal property, I think it was ten thousand dollars. Form One now requires an individual listing of assets over a thousand. In addition, probably the most comprehensive change, difference in the two forms, is you have to disclose all of your business interest, business income, or any company in which you own greater than five percent. So, that's number one. I'd urge each of you to look at the Form Six and the agenda package is a very comprehensive presentation that was done. You can see George, or Governor Santos's twenty twenty-one Form Six, and then the handout goes into the differences and the various categories, for instance, how to disclose assets, assets, anything valued a thousand plus that can be sold, most common, bank accounts, real property, stock. Again, the business interest income is much more specific and much lower threshold. As far as your income, the Form One, you didn't have to disclose your public income. Form Six, you do. It does give you an option to attach a federal income tax return and all scheduled, all scheduled attachments in lieu of that. The next requirement is that beginning in twenty twenty-four, they have to be filed electronically. We've been taking our Form Ones to the supervisor of elections, so now you're going to have to go on the portal. The handout gives you a step-by-step tutorial on accessing the Commission on Ethics website so that you can file that electronically as required. And then finally, you have the option, and you designated on your form, that you have the option of having an attorney or CPA assist you in the preparation of that Form Six. And then if you look at the Form Six, you go online, obtain a copy of it, and most critical information, I think, is at the bottom right-hand corner of page six, as it's printed under the old version. It gives you where to file written questions and the following number to the Commission on Ethics if you do have any questions about the Form Six. So, just wanted to bring your attention that beginning in twenty twenty-four, you won't be filing the Form One anymore. They lumped the mayor and members of the commission and municipal officers into the body of persons that have to file the Form Six.
So, this will be due by July first?
I believe it is July first, and again, it's a look back on your.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, snapshot of your finances on twelve thirty-one or a more recent date of your choosing. Filers will disclose their net worth on twelve thirty-one on a more recent date, whereas a Form One, there was, you did not have to file a net worth, net worth disclosure, and the handout tells you how you calculate that. And then there's a, if you don't file it after July one, I think a twenty-five dollar fine up to a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars.
Now, do you know, can you file it early? Like, if you have the information by March, you could go ahead and file it?
The way I read it, it says by July one, so looking, because you're looking at a snapshot in the previous calendar year. I think my analysis is you can file it before.
Yeah, they used to mail it out, like in, or something like that.
Supervisor of elections would mail everybody their Form One because administration has to disclose at that time who our officials were that were required to file a Form One, and then supervisor of elections would send you out a blank copy of information on returning it to you.
You think they'll be sending something out this year, or we just got to remember?
I think they probably, it still has the same updating where we have to tell the Commission on Ethics who is.
Needs to file.
Needs to file. So, that'd be the mayor and our elected public officials would be on, effective on this body.
If you can fit that on the calendar.
Mayor, it may be a little different for those of you that are going to be running for reelection next year, so that form will be due during qualifying, so the Form Six may be due a little sooner for those of you that'll be running for reelection, because that's part of your qualifying documents, just for your attention.
It'll be the same form, just?
Same form, just do earlier, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question along this form. So, if you're also still a Form One filer and a Form Six filer, can you just file Form Six? Will that take the place of, you won't need to file both?
That's not addressed, but my reading is, is that since you're no longer required to file a Form One under the statute, that the Form Six is the one that you would file?
Oh, yeah, some of us may have to file a Form One for other items.
Right.
Other than being here, so the Form Six would take the place?
That I'm not sure. It talks about, within the different statutes that were amended, it talks about if you have a position in which you were required to file a Form Six, is the way it reads, that you can notify the Commission on Ethics that you filed it relative to position A, and that you're going to, as you're filing for, position B. But I would say it's not addressed in the statutory scheme, but I can't imagine that a Form Six could not take the place of a Form One.
About your other questions? Okay, moving on to item eighteen, Mr. Dow.
Yes, I actually have this put on the agenda for discussion. Mr. Dow reached out to me about coming back, and I assured him that I would get it put on the agenda for discussion, and I'm doing, I told him I would do is have it put on the agenda for discussion. And I'm doing, I told him I would do is have it put on the agenda for discussion.
Well, uh, uh, is Mr. Dow here? Be, be a Zoom or is he here? If Mr. Dow is not here, I, I think that's the, or should be a requirement. He should be here to defend himself or defend his request, and he's not here, so I say we're not even discussing it.
Well, as far as discussion, then that's, I, I agree with your, you got an opinion on it. Uh, anybody else got?
Mayor, uh, I, you know, I thought about this, prayed about it, talked to constituents, around and about, uh, this, this rehiring of Mr. Dow. Uh, to me personally, I don't have a problem with it either way. However, uh, there are some things that, uh, there's some questions that I have for Mr. Dow as to, it, it's motivations. Because I tried all I could to keep him here, and then, of course, he decided to do elsewhere. And a person's gotta do what they gotta do. Uh, of course, I believe in giving a person a second chance. And, uh, I talked to other department officials, and, uh, they pretty much, nobody's got a problem. Everybody's, uh, concludes that, uh, he's a good, uh, city manager. But with that being said, I would like for him to go through the process of, uh, of, of, you know, maybe getting rehired if he, if he meets the, uh, criteria and the qualifications. Uh, also, I've had other people that was interested in being, uh, a city manager as well. Uh, I've had three, one emailed and two individuals that would love to become a city manager. So, uh, I, I, I don't even think it's necessary to hire firm. I think we should give these people an opportunity, just like we did, uh, Mr. Dow. I also, uh, I wanted to know what was gonna happen with Mr. Johnson, uh, is paid. Uh, there, there's a lot of questions I just need answers to. Once I get those answers, uh, I would definitely consider it one way or the other, when it comes to Mr. Dow. I never had a problem with him. I thought he did an excellent job. So I just got questions for him before I take a, uh, action on anything. I would definitely like to talk to Mr., uh, Mr. Dow personally myself.
Well, me again.
Your Honor.
Um, as I stated before, Mr. Dow is not here, so we can't get questions answered at that sound. And what I would like to say is, um, as I stated, when, um, we were discussing and possible action, Mr. Dow, Mr. Johnson, Dee Johnson, being in the position of interim city manager. And he's in this position, interim city manager, and I believe any other discussion is a slap in the face. He deserves a chance, and I believe we came to that agreement, or he wouldn't be in this position. Allow him. I said twelve months before, I, I, eighteen months is perfect. Allow him eighteen months in this interim position. Um, and I know we can't, um, make a motion and vote on it tonight, but I would love to see it on the next meeting agenda. Go ahead and nip this in the bud, give this man the opportunity to complete the pro- the, um, the fulfilling his, um, proving of what he can do in this position. I have confidence in him. I, I just know he can do it. He is doing a great job thus far. Eighteen months, eighteen months. Mr. Dee Johnson deserves eighteen months in, as interim city manager. We don't need a hiring firm at this point. We don't need another city manager. We have who we need in place, and let's allow him the opportunity. Can we get that on the next agenda?
If, um, Mr. Dow wants to make a proposal too, it's certainly, we'll see what the proposal will be, but if we don't have any facts now.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment on this? So you quit, two months later, you want your job back. I mean, I, I don't know why he quit. We asked, we didn't get an answer. I mean, did he have a job offer somewhere else that fell through? Don't know, don't know. That's something we would ask if he was here. But to me, if you quit, and I've seen this in the corporate world, typically, if you quit, you don't get your job back. You go through the hiring process again, and, and that's what I would think. And then, and then speaking to the second part, uh, Mr. Johnson may one day make a good manager, but he doesn't qualify by the charter, at least in my discussions with him. I believe that's correct, isn't it, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, per the charter.
Okay, per the charter. So the charter is the set of the laws that we have to go by, so. But as far as Mr. Dow, I mean, he quit. I'd welcome him to apply in the process, whatever process we look at.
So he doesn't qualify for city manager, but he, we know he qualified for interim, or he wasn't, he wouldn't be here. And I didn't say for him in the city manager position in the future, hopefully that he will be. But interim city manager as he's, um, sit in the seat today, eighteen months.
Any other comments on this item? All right.
What, what did you, I didn't hear your comment. What, what did you say?
Uh, if he wants to present us a proposal, I'll look at it. All right, let's move to item four. Oh, Mr. Mountain, I'm sorry. I, I, this, and I looked at you and I.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. I do think that in the discussion, you need to think about, uh, Mr. Simpson made a good point. Charter is the charter. I understand that Mr. Johnson is not qualified per the charter. I'm not qualified to practice law, but I think I can get a court to do it, but I can't sue him because I'm not qualified to do it per the law. When you start dealing with the charter and with the code, you, you, the bottom is the better thing that governs this government. I'm gonna stick about the city manager form of government. I would hate to go back to the strong man form of government. Now, what happened with this? And I wish Mr. Dow was here. When Mr. Dow hired Mr. Johnson, it was in the charter then that even the sister city manager needed to have a full year degree. But because he was city managing how we want, how, that's fine. But to, to, to suggest that, uh, that Mr. Johnson would be here for eighteen months, and that would be fine. After answering, and he did the job. But there is no guarantee that this time nation, this council will look this way. There's no guarantee that, just like we got rid of Mr. Heffernan, three of them will set the kind of company, so you can't plan for Mr. Johnson to be here for eighteen months. You can only say that we would allow him to be interim for eighteen months if that's a permission of the council. It's also reasonable to hire firm or either have HR people to do a search, because there are other people. There's not no flex on Mr. Johnson, but to suggest that Mr. Dow is the best thing ever happened in Lake City since bread, and now Mr. Johnson is, is somebody we can depend on, we don't know that. We thought we could depend on Mr. Dow. He walked away. We begged the man. I stood around this, in this way around him, pretty much begged the man, and he still walked away. And so the point I'm making to you, Mr. Mayor, your decision can't be centered around a person. I agree with doing anything you can to help Mr. Johnson succeed and get to that degree we had before. It can't go away. You gotta either vibe out of charter or make a way that you, that you can get around it. The only you can get around it is make him the interim because he, it's not required that he have an education. Now, I mean, a degree, not education, a degree. I don't have to have ten years of experience. But you cannot run the city because of a personality. The charter says one thing, you either gotta stick by the charter or you gotta change the charter. And you all can't change the charter. Charter gonna be changed on the ballot. And I'm not suggesting, I'm, I'm not anti-Mr. Johnson, I'm not even anti-Mr. Dow, but I am pro the charter. And if you can't figure out how to do the charter, then that's on y'all. That's on y'all. You all gotta figure out a way how to do this, and no strength in man alone. It's insulting. If I was in this position, I would be insulted that Mr. Dow, even talking about coming back, that he gonna told me that I can do the job. Why? We are, uh, everybody know he don't have the education requirement. Everybody know he don't have the background, uh, the experience requirement. So what's the motivation? It's mail. It may not be anything wrong with it, Mr. Mayor, but perception of, why would you do that? Why would you leave the city? Stick on two months and say, oh, yeah, by the way, I think I can do a better job than Dee Johnson, even I just said he can do the job. So I think the city council need to, to either decide on what Mr., you know what I'm saying? Or you need to use the HR to do a search, or you do a search firm. It's a mistake, I, I, give you this third one, sir. It's a mistake to assume that you don't need a search firm. There is not many citizens in this country that when you go out and seek for, uh, uh, or, or city manager, they don't use a search firm. They can use a search firm to find a utility now, right? And there's a reason for that. There's all kinds of talents out there. There's talent right here in this community.
Okay, we're getting faster three minutes.
Yeah, 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 Mayor, but I mean, you say that, okay, that's fine. I, I wanna buy.
If they get on me, if I don't, then I get on me if I do. Okay, we're out of four. City Council Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one three oh. Cannon, would you read that by time?
City Council Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one thirty. A resolution to the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a contract with Colin Benzinger and Associates providing for executive recruitment services related to the employment of a city manager, declaring an emergency pursuant to section two dash one eighty-one of the City Code, authorizing an agreement not to exceed twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, providing for conflict and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion out of City Council Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one three zero?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, um, I made the motion to, uh, hire this search firm, but I would like to, um, I got a question for the city attorney. This, um, the HR.
Yeah, they can.
Can we go back and look at the previous application that applied for this job? And if the top two or three candidates are still, uh, interested, could we seek their, you know, to reapply instead of going through this firm?
You can do that before you enter into the contract. Now, once you enter the contract, you validate terms that they'll do the, the advertising, et cetera. But you can do that before you hire Benzinger, if that's your pleasure.
Well, I would like to do that because this, like I said, this, this twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, I think you'd be saving the city by going back and look at the two top candidates from the last.
A search.
Search, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Brown signed and speak there.
Do what?
As I signed and speak there. As I signed and speak.
Okay, go ahead, uh, before we get started.
Mr. Mayor, I'm on the opposite side of my friend Jake Hill on this, Bert. When you look at the professional, it's been almost two years since we had those two top candidates. There could be another twenty people that's more capable than those two. It's not fair to the profession. I mean, I don't even wanna save a few dollars, you know? And that's fine. You can still do the taxpayer's money, but you gotta think about what's fair. There are other people, there are people in this community that want to apply for the job. Open the job up, you know, that say, well, get the top two that, that you didn't get. The top two may or may not be interested, and there may be another three that's more qualified than the last top two. It's been two years gone by. Come on, uh, save the money, that's fine, then use your HR, uh, department as Mr. Simpson suggested. And, and reach out to the, go out into the world and see who's out there. You never know. It could be somebody right there in Kansas, somebody right here in the next city. I suspect there's somebody in this room that could do the job.
Mr. Brown, go ahead and apply, put your application.
All right, I'm not applying for nothing. In fact, this may be my last time coming to the city council meeting. But I'm, I'm trying, but anyway, I'm wasting my time. The point I'm trying to make, Mr. Brown, is this. Don't short the people in this community. We deserve the best talent that's available, and you can't get it unless you look for it. You know, what they say, ain't nothing if you're but fear yourself. You gotta be willing to take a chance. I'm not saying waste the money, but people spend money to get money. I mean, people just gonna walk in, hey, I wanna be the city manager of the city, make city. No, you gotta advertise, reach out there, see who's available. It's the end, it, it showing out good people, black, brown, and women. There's no good woman at this city council that are, or, or city manager in this city. Not a permanent city manager there.
But we have interviewed them.
The point though, they never been hired. I'm, I'm gonna history, but I ain't talking about this city council. But you gotta think outside the box. You are not gonna be, I was here for sixteen years, and I've been gone thirty. So, so you're not gonna be a family. You gotta think what's best after you're gone. Who gonna be here then? The city manager position is important, and you can't just go, well, somebody applied two years ago, and they may be still interested. Where there may be somebody else interested that's more qualified than that person that applied two years ago. So I would totally reject that idea. If you're gonna search, search. If you're not, then you're not gonna do it. But don't play games with this, because it's serious. This gentleman sitting there, he trying, he trying to get him this way he can get to be the city manager, but he may not get it. He may go to school for the home and get a degree, he still may not get the job. Search for, search for some talent. Don't, this, this local home, all stuff don't work for me.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion out of City Council Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one three zero?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
Sure.
Have there been any applications for city managers that have come in? Do we know, do we know if there's?
I don't write off. I don't know. That's my knowledge.
We, we had a few that were forwarded. Uh, it's been some time back, though.
That's what I'm understanding, is there was, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while back, though. They were all forwarded to you guys.
And you know, the, the best focus is forward. And, and our conversation is just sitting in here today in this meeting and, and is looking back. We, we gotta look forward. And, and looking forward is not looking at past applications. And, and I, I've, I've said what I, what I desire, um, what I think is best for, for this city and, and, um. But when talking about an applicant, when you go and ask somebody, are you still interested? Uh, it, it kind of gives the, the impression that you, you're hungry and, and you don't have what you need. But we don't know what we have. We could be crying hunger with a loaf of bread upon our arms. We have a lot here in Lake City, and as Mr. Bowden has stated, and we don't know who's in, we don't know who's interested. So I, I want us to just stop looking back and let us look forward. Let us look ahead and see who's interested in this position, if that's the route it's gonna happen.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Bowden, uh, and they, like I said several months ago, this process is gonna take a while, and we haven't got, how to shoot with it. My recommendation is that we hire this firm, do it right, do the best we can to get a person. Mr. Johnson's done a great job, and he will continue to do a great job. It's gonna be for a while, because this process, I tell you, is gonna take a while at best. So my, I'm gonna make the motion to approve of City Council Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one three zero. One second.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
You know, I presented a, a plan where HR could take applications. Part of it was to look back, only to obtain those applications, but to be open to new applicants. There was a point made from the podium, we could have people right now that are interested, but it's not opened up. So, and getting back to Mr. Hill's point about spending the funds, what would it hurt to open up to take some applications here through the HR department? And take a look at those applications at a time and demand, like we had talked about. Open it up for a period of, say, I don't know, three, four weeks to apply. And then from there, go ahead and do a process to see if any of them qualify and move forward. I think it's a lot of money we're spending. And to me, you know, if you advertise and people wanna apply, it'll open it up for what Ms. Young was talking about, give opportunity for application. But at the same time, if there is someone in the past that, that had applied, that was qualified, which we had several, that we couldn't move forward with on a short board, we had a lot of two-two votes. It would give them, if they're interested, an opportunity to apply. So I would be interested in trying to move forward, get an appli- get, get a notice out and get applications sent to HR that way. And reach out to the people who apply, just say, hey, here's your opportunity to apply. And that wouldn't even preclude Mr. Dow. If he wanted to apply, then there's an application process, and you go through it.
We hire, uh, professionals, engineers, and all to do with the. We hire professionals, engineers, and all to do the help us with this job, and I think hiring this group would be that tool. And, uh, it's a big decision to make, but if the council don't want to do it.
Mr. Mayor, would it be, could we just ask if, I mean, I don't know if it'd be right. So you made a motion. Would there be anyone interested in the possibility of our HR department doing applications in advance? We haven't discussed it since that meeting way back, I mean, it's October, I think.
Well, I guess my motion fails, it was start. Bye.
Right. You, you got it, Tom?
Uh, you know, Todd Sampson, he makes, you know, a, a very, very good point, you know, and, uh, it's just amazing how I can agree to disagree with, uh, Todd Sampson. Uh, I, I'm in agreeance with that, we, we get with our personnel department and, uh, reach out to everyone, not looking backward, of course, we want to look forward. Uh, then we could have some people here, uh, in this building uh, that qualifies and capable of doing the job as well, so. And again, uh, let Mr. Dowell, uh, put in for it as well, uh, just go through the whole process. So I'm in agreeance with, uh, Mr. Sampson and, and Ms. Young, uh, to, to, to go forward. Even with Mr. Hill, uh, we, we, we just move forward and, and, you know, don't look back.
Okay, damn.
So would that be in the case, would it be a motion to start an application process, or what do we need to do?
We need to do something, so if you want to make a motion, uh.
I didn't bring it with me, but I kind of made a proposal previously that was to this. But I would make a motion that we would open up the city manager position for applications through our HR department, and they would advertise in the way they would normally do. And that we would give them, how long to review applications?
Eighteen months.
Hmm, thirty days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days to review applications and present them to the list.
I second.
So you're having to wait it for thirty days? Now, the rank of holiday, I think it'd be a tough thirty days.
Sixty days.
You're gonna have the HR department review the application, so.
Um, I, I mean, I think reviewing for matching the charter, but I think they need to get forwarded us ultimately, we're the decision makers.
I, I think the sixty days is, is reasonable.
I, I mean, I could go with sixty days, because of the holidays, I could see that being an issue to get an application package put together. We're three weeks from today's Christmas. So a lot of people's gonna be doing a lot of that.
Okay, we have a motion, one second.
Would you agree with the sixty days? Uh, yes.
Please, they vote for sixty days?
One second.
I second.
All right, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, is the council, are you giving the HR department the authority to come up with the application in the process, or do you guys want to review the application in the process, um?
I would say use the same application we used last time.
Last time, I believe they submitted resumes.
I think that's perfect.
I, I believe that they submitted applications, but I can't swear that I think.
I, I think, I think a resume with the city application.
They submitted a resume.
Yeah, I think a city application should be included, because that mentions all the questions about background and, and everything you're gonna need.
All right, we have a motion, one second. Any further discussion, it's actually been called over.
Ma'am, may I ask one additional question? Do you have any specifications where you want this position advertised at?
I, I would leave it up to the HR department. They're the experts of where to find people. I'd say definitely at, at the, um, league of cities, I mean, they, any of the management places, the broader the reach, the better.
Okay, you had mentioned that you want them to advertise typically where they normally advertise, but we don't typically advertise for a city manager position, that's why I was asking for the question. So, um, okay. All righty. All right, Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Eighteen months. No, ma'am.
Mayor Whit.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on down to the file. Uh, discussion, possible action, Section Two, Five, Three of the Code of Ordinances relating to compensation of Mayor, Council members, Council members, section down here for it.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, can we go back just one moment? I know something that was a sticking point last time when you guys were looking to hire a city manager, was the compensation. Do you want to give some guidance to HR as to what the compensation minimum salary will be? Because that was a huge sticking point last time with our applicants. When it got down to the hiring, if you don't remember, that was.
Well, no, we lost the first guy we wanted to hire, because he didn't know what the number was. So I think if we just have the range similar.
To what it is now?
Yeah, I would think so.
What range does he like us to provide to HR?
One fifty.
One fifty to one.
Sixty.
Sixty.
One forty to one fifty, you don't go one, you know, we not gonna go with one fifty, are we? One forty to one fifty.
I'll find it at, one forty to one fifty.
Is everybody in agreement with that? Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? Mayor Whit?
Yep.
Mr. Sampson?
Yep.
Ms. Young?
One forty to one fifty.
One forty to one fifty, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so we're on out of, Mr. Sampson, did you want?
Um, I know this item was on the agenda last time, and of course, I wasn't here, but, um, I wanted to make a motion for option one, which is at the budget time, um, that we would bring up a raise instead of the automatic raises.
Okay. Is my motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you've got a motion, now a second, any further discussion?
Uh, yes, wait, no, you go ahead.
This part about the raise, we sit on this council. When inflation go up, everybody in here feels it. So why we got to vote on getting a raise? When inflation rise, for everybody in here, it rises for us too.
Well, just vote yes.
Why would we have to vote? Why can't it be just like it's in, already in the charter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So my preference is the transparency in the budget process. Um, for years, the council didn't get the raise that the ordinance said they were supposed to get, many years.
Many years.
And so, talk about inflation, the council makes now very similarly to what they made initially, if you look at the time value money, what the value is. But to me, I just think from the constituent perspective and from the, um, perspective of the people looking at our budget process, the clarity. That's not saying there can't be a raise, there could be a raise every year, um, as long as it doesn't exceed the raise of the other city employees. It's just that we would have to bring it forward and vote on it, and I can tell you, I think, I think that makes the most sense, because it's better to have that discussion. I'm not against raises. I think there's a lot of times this council's really underpaid for the number of hours we put in. Um, but let's have that discussion in public, where the public has the opportunity to comment on it, and they can say, well, we don't deserve it. And, and I think that gives us an opportunity to, to say, hey, maybe that three percent raise that everybody else is getting, and we look at it from the perspective of the employees too.
Mr. Charlie?
Yes, um, again, you know, you, you know, you work in law enforcement, you work for the feds, you work for this person, work for that person, I don't know anybody in here that, uh, that don't pay taxes. Whether you got a business or not, uh, you get that money, and you decide on what you want to do with it. For example, uh, every year, your insurance is gonna go up, it's, it's no doubt. So that compensation helps with that insurance. Uh, I, I'm not against, uh, uh, giving the, uh, the money back to some charity. Uh, uh, I'm not against giving it back to, uh, uh, some church. Uh, but to say, uh, let the constituents vote on your salary, your raise, uh, I, I just, I, I don't understand it, and, and, uh, and, and again, because if I wasn't paying taxes in this city, I could see somebody voting against it or for it. But I pay taxes, I'm in the city limits, I pay taxes. My water bill goes up every year, same like sewers, garbage, everything goes up. So, uh, that money is going right back to the, to, to, to the city, uh, in, in, in my opinion, uh, because of the cost of living. When, when you, when you in, uh, uh, jobs, you get a cost of living. But we talk about, uh, our, uh, first responders, those guys go out there and do a good job. They're gonna get a raise, they're gonna get a cost of living from, from here down to Miami. You're gonna get a cost of living raise, and, and to say that somebody's got to vote for that, uh, uh, and, and I remember Mr. Bowden, uh, said he voted for it back in nineteen eighty-nine, if I'm not mistaken. That's one of our forefathers, he voted for it then.
I'm mistaken.
Uh, uh, he voted for it then, he voted for it then. And now, and, and now, uh, uh, oh, oh, we, we did it wrong back then, so let's do it right now. Mayor, you know, we, we voted, we did this, we did that. Uh, and I, I don't understand why we would go back. Miss, Miss, uh, Ms. Young, she said going backwards, we gotta go forward with things, we cannot go backwards. And I believe that if we leave it the way it is, we're good. If we try to change it, we're basically going backwards, you know, so, uh, and, and, and again, you, you know, whatever, uh, this board decides, I, I'm, I'm on board with it, don't get me wrong, but I have to tell you exactly the way I feel and what I think. And I talked to constituents, uh, in that area, and, and this ludicrous, wants to even have this conversation, that's what they, LP. Uh, the, the county, county commissioners, they get their raise, school board members, they get their raise. Everybody gets their raise. It's almost like, uh, I'm old enough to get re- uh, re- retirement or, uh, social security, every year, they get a raise. Why, why don't we just tell them, say, hey, uh, don't worry about it this year here, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna vote to see if, uh, social security is still gonna be around. I mean, this, this, this ludicrous.
I don't, um, I'm not anti, anti-raised. And I, I think I'm, either I'm missing, uh, Mr. Jernigan, or it's the, the council who's gonna actually vote for the raise. You're saying the constituents are, they're, are voting. We're the ones who actually vote for the raise. And it's just, it's transparency, that's looking forward transparency. We don't have anything to hide, we can vote to give ourselves a raise. I don't understand what the problem is, we can still get a raise every year.
Okay, what if, what if we, um, three of us decide that we don't, we don't, um, we don't deserve a raise, we don't get a raise? But, so it don't, again, but again, it, it don't pass, but inflation is still going up. The cost of living is still going up. Tell the city employees that this year, y'all ain't gonna get no raise. But when, at the end of that year, that year, the next fiscal year, the insurance goes up, they still at the same salary.
That's great, yeah, I, I sign up for that.
Also, also, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I was just texting the, uh, the city attorney. Uh, does, does he get a raise too, or we have to vote for him?
He gets a salary, he gets paid by contract.
Right, uh, okay.
All right, Mr. Bowden.
Mr. Mayor, council, the problem is this, the people are the boss. The, it's like this, the citizen, councilman, then the manager. You give yourself a ball on a raise, but you're not the boss. The people are the boss. And nobody said you can't get a raise? Are you afraid to put it in front of? Have a discussion. You go through the budget process, this line out here, we're gonna give ourselves five percent raise. It's the same thing. You vote for the city employee to get a raise, and you're set to get a raise. You can vote for the city employee to get a raise, and you vote for yourself to get a raise. Nobody said you can't get it. I'm saying you're hiding from the people by not letting the people decide, that's what I did. I didn't want to face the people. You get nineteen thousand dollars a year for a politician job. If you got your three percent, you know, that, that about thirty dollars. They are about thirty dollars, and all we say, all the public says, let us be inspired then. Let's be inspired then. This people that say the council didn't get their raise for two years, didn't even know they supposed to be getting it. Oh, trust me, I knew I was supposed to get a raise. Well, you should have said something about that then. Okay, I. I'm never, that, that's, that's, we have a discussion, that, that, you don't want to do that, like, that, that would be a true, that would be a pretty messy. The point I'm making to you is transparency. Mr. Jernigan, you said at the last meeting, that's my whole truth, he said at the last meeting that the founder, the father, you know, the city town, before I got here later. And Mr. Noah's on this guy, he got this reason why he did it, but my reason for doing it, because I didn't want to deal with the public every year saying, give me a raise. If you're so confident that you deserve a raise, then let the people decide. You know, keep in mind, you're not the boss, the people are the boss. You voted for yourself a raise, you got a football team, the owner gets a court raise, the court don't give us a raise? You're insulting the people, you don't trust us? Come on, guys, this ain't, this, this is our money. You say you pay taxes, but you voted yourself a raise. Without us even having opportunity to say whether you deserve it or not. For a little bit of thirty dollars, and what you do with it, Mr. Jernigan, is your business. It's how you get it, it's the public get it. Where the money comes from is our business. You take thirty dollars and give it to a charity, give it to the boys club, give it to the fish club, that's your business. But how you get it, is the people responsible. So you have so many people that say to us, that we're gonna give ourselves a raise, we don't care what y'all think. That's not how you do that, let us have something to say. If you're afraid of the public, let the public have something to say, all I want is to have something to say, and you still getting voted. Thirty-two, you know, but let's put this in risk, Mayor, because this, 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 this don't make much sense to me. We arguing about something that, that's thirty dollars maximum, but the public is being shut out. So I said, we want some transparency, open it up, do the budget process.
Mr. Bowden, if I can say, Mr. Bowden, if I can say, I, I believe the hardest part of this field to follow is that Mr. Bowden is standing here, and, and it took me a while to process it. Mr. Bowden is standing here, he voted for this, and now he's saying it makes no sense. But it didn't make, it made all the sense then, but it doesn't make sense now. Look, I'm just, I'm trying to cut you down, but I'm just saying, this is probably the hardest part to process. It took me a minute.
It made sense then to me, you know why? Because I didn't want to deal with the people out here. That's why it made sense. The money that made, I didn't want to deal with the people. So why is it, that, that's all I'm saying to you. It didn't make sense, it made sense to me then, because I didn't have to work, because nobody would pay attention to the budget process. This last budget process, if the public had to come up and say, listen, man, look here, y'all got a raise. Look here, there's a thirty dollar dollar truck, and they're gonna sit the pole around, around it, and the public. Open up for the public, if you're afraid of the public, then you're in the wrong position, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Daddy, somebody want to speak?
Yes. Hi, my name is Danny Goggins. Seven twenty-one southeast Camp Street. I want, I want it just remain the same it was back in nineteen eighty-nine. Then I believe that each one of you should get the raise. I am a taxpayer, I speak as a citizen, and I wholeheartedly don't want to take money out of your pockets, cost of living is gonna be up. And yes, I, who am I to say who deserves, but it's already written that you're gonna get it. So let's not waste too much time on this, it's already documented. By, uh, when Mr. Bowden was on that council, it's already documented. The money should be yours, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goggins.
Ms. Lax, will you go over, please?
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Say, what do we vote on?
The motion is for option one.
Okay, yes.
And that is to, um, for the council to vote on it at budget time, okay. All right, Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Mr. Jernigan?
No.
Mayor Whit?
Yes.
Okay. Option one, under new business, we have City Council Ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Dash Twenty Two Sixty-Five on first reading. Mr. Ken, would you read that by time?
Ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Dash Twenty Two Sixty-Five, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending Sections Two Dash One Seven Eight, Pren E, and Two Dash One Eight Two, Article Six, Chapter Two of the Code of the City of Lake City relating to purchases of items and contractual services and bid procedures, providing that all purchases of items and contractual services, when the estimated cost thereof exceeds thirty-two items and contractual services when the estimated cost thereof exceeds thirty-five thousand dollars be purchased by formal written contract approved by the city council after public notice inviting quotations and proposals. Providing that all bid-based contracts for the purchase of items and contractual services when the estimated cost thereof exceeds thirty-five thousand dollars be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, providing for the elimination of bid quotations for purchase of items and services when the cost thereof does not exceed five thousand dollars. Providing for bid procedures for the purchase of items and services when the cost exceeds five thousand dollars but is less than fifteen thousand dollars. Providing for bid procedures for the purchase of items and services when the cost thereof exceeds fifteen thousand dollars but is less than thirty-five thousand dollars. Providing for bid procedures for the purchase of items and services which cost thirty-five thousand dollars or more. Providing for separability, providing for the repeal of conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion as to city council order twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two sixty-five on first reading?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for approval of city council ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two sixty-five on the first reading.
Sir.
An emotion under second amendment discussion. Ms. Lax, will you call it over, please?
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes.
Mayor, just to bring your attention to something, on, uh, the previous item, item five, under section two dash five, three, the code, where option one just passed, that will have to come back before council to change the code, so it will have to come back as an ordinance and be read twice. Just, yeah, I just wanna make sure we have it.
Thank you for that. Uh, under resolution, we have city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine-nine. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh-nine-nine, the resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the city, the city to enter into change order number two to the contract between the city and SGS Contracting Services, Inc., relating to replacement of two existing implant reuse pumps at the St. Margaret's wastewater treatment facility for a price not to exceed one hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine-nine?
Mr. Mayor, make the most approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine-nine.
Second.
Now, motion under second, any discussion? Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. I'd lay the city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-two-zero. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-two-zero, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, rescinding city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-eight-oh, authorize the execution of a contract with List Products and Services, Inc., for the purchase and installation of twenty-four foot end length by thirty-foot end width times twelve-foot end height, prefabricated metal building pole barn at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-two-zero?
Mr. Mayor, make the most approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-five.
One-two-zero.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, one-two-zero, sorry.
Second.
Got a motion under second, any discussion? Ms. Lax, will you call it over, please?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Uh, Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-five. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-three-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of an application to the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for the acceptance of a pre-approved grant of highway traffic safety funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for strategic traffic enforcement programs, including speeding and aggressive driving, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion as the city council twenty twenty-three dash one-three-five?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion of twenty twenty-three dash one-three-five.
Second.
Got a motion under second, any discussion?
Chief, would this hear hip-hop with the speeding through the neighborhoods? With aggressive driving also through the neighborhood?
Yes, sir, this allows overtime, actually, all three grants that are coming up is, except for the impaired driving, which also includes training costs for the officers to identify and, uh, test drunk drivers, but this will allow me to put extra units on overtime, uh, paid for by the state up into the areas of the city where we do have, we've identified speed and aggressive driving. So the answer is yes, gonna let me put more officers up there. Thank you.
Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Out of camp, city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-six. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-three-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of an application to the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for the acceptance of a pre-approved grant of highway traffic safety funds in the amount thirty-five thousand dollars for a strategic traffic enforcement program, including impaired driving and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-six?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash one-three-six.
Sir.
Got a motion under second, any discussion? Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-seven. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-three-seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of an application to the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for the acceptance of a pre-approved grant of highway traffic safety fund in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for a strategic traffic enforcement program, including occupant protection and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-seven?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-three-seven.
Second.
Motion under second, any discussion? I know overtime's a big issue for them, but this helps, that's what we agree, it's time to be called over.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Out of twelve, the city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-eight. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-three-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreement with the Florida State Lodge, Fraternal Awards, Police League, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-eight?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for approval of city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-eight.
Second.
Got a motion under second, any discussion? Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Next, the city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-nine. Would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-three-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a contract with Florida Industrial and Construction Services, LLC, for the purchase and installation of thirty-eight foot end length by sixteen foot end width by twelve foot end height, prefabricated metal building pole barn on an existing slab at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-nine?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for approval of city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-three-nine.
Second.
Got a motion under second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, where are these, uh, pole barns relocated at? Uh, this one here will be located at the water treatment plant. Uh, it'll help for when we have freezing temperatures for long period, uh, periods of time. Uh, the one that we just rescinded was going to the water waste treatment plant on St. Margaret's, but we rescinded that because the vendor could not meet the specifications.
Okay.
Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Out of fourteen, the city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-four zero. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
Yes, sir, um, someone have the first page title of that, my copy machine caught my first page.
Yep, what do you need, one forty?
One...
But item number fourteen?
Yeah. City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty, a resolution, resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of statewide mutual aid agreement with the state of Florida Division of Emergencies and Management, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-four zero?
Mr. Mayor, make motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-four-zero.
Second.
Got a motion under second, any discussion? Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Out of fifteen, city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-four-one. Mr. Kennedy, would you read that by time?
City council resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one-four-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of task assignment number nine to the continuum contract with both Florida Professional Services, Inc., providing for engineering services related to resurfacing on Southwest Grandview Street, providing for payment for the professional services at a cost not to exceed five thousand, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion as city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-four-one?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for approval of city council resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-four-one.
Second.
Got a motion under second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so this is something that we've been working on for several years, I'm glad to see us getting to this point. Um, when we started, mostly in my district, now it's in both Mr. Jernigan and my district. So, uh, if you've driven this street, you know it was the next one down on the list, so I appreciate the, the city employees getting this thing rolling.
I disagree. Between McFarland and Assistant Weldon, we're from...
All the way, right?
Um, it's two parts, the SCOP grant funded, uh, section from Faith Road to McFarland, so this will be from McFarland to the dead end on the east side.
I think, Ms. Lax, will you call it over?
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor with.
Yes. Okay. Out of sixteen, discussion, possible action, city consider release of revert clause regarding two parcels of land that may be related to community development. January fifth, two thousand nine, POC, city council resolution two thousand nine oh-five for permanent affordable housing. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, resolution two thousand nine dash zero zero five, we gave two parcels to the Greater Lake City Community Development Corporation exclusively for affordable housing. Uh, parcel one was located on six-two-seven Northeast Washington Street, and it has been developed. The second parcel of two-on-four Northeast Excamia Street has not broke ground. Um, the resolution stated that both parcels were to be completed and a certificate of occupancy within three years from the date of the deed, or the property shall revert back to the city. I also like to state that nowhere in that agreement did we stay waiving any fees associated with this project. The deed was executed on February twentieth of two thousand nine, which would have made the twentieth of two thousand and twelve the end of the deadline. This property only came to my attention because of it has a code enforcement issue. So now, um, we have the Greater Lake City Community Development, they're warning y'all to extend it or, um, waive the revert clause.
Mr. Mayor, I got some questions on that.
Sure.
So, when we talked before, I wasn't sure about the, the property, but I noticed, so, so the one piece that's developed, I, is that the one, which one has the code enforcement issue?
The one that's not developed.
That's what I thought, okay. So I would be okay with waiving, um, parcel one, because it's been developed as agreed to, is that correct?
Yes.
But on parcel two, I'm not for waiving that. Um, I, I know this has both of them tied together, they shouldn't be together. Now, I wouldn't be for extending, because we need homes to be built. Um, but the whole reason this was given, now this is well before, I don't know if any of us were here, maybe the mayor was the only one, Jake, but, so, they did half of the job, and that's good, but the other half, and now it's not gonna be a mode, right?
Right, that is correct.
So, I mean, I could go either way, either extend it three years, or tell them, give us that piece back, we'll...
Well, I think the problem with this, this piece of property is, is the location. Um, I, I, I would, I would lean towards giving an extension.
Extension?
Yeah, um, like I said, with they, from, every success, since day one, that's, that's been a bad location for us, getting any type of housing in there.
How far would you want to extend it? Three more years?
Three years.
And release the other one that's built?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, you wanna extend parcel two, three years?
The one on Excamia.
On Excamia, right, and you wanna, the revert will still be in place, if they don't complete it in three years?
Right, right.
Okay.
That way it just hang out there.
But release parcel one.
Correct.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Phil, I'll wait for you.
Okay, I, I do have some questions. Most of them was here, they were here before, and I had some other questions, um, and mainly to see where they are, um, is three years gonna make a difference?
From my conversations, I'm sorry, not...
Go ahead.
Um, I've asked what the timeframe looks on this, I haven't got a date myself. Um, I know they had some issues, I think they stated for funding, so I'm not sure if we need to wait and maybe have them here to maybe answer that question for us, how long do they need?
Because I, one of my questions was, um, because, um, the gentleman did say, the Mr. McKellen, I'm gonna say it wrong, okay, he did say that they do have a sponsor, and I asked the question, um, was that one sponsor enough, or did they have to seek out other sponsors, and they do need other sponsors, um, so...
As well as, you know, the only way the sponsor that they came to us would even entertain it is if we waived any leans on the property, basically give them a clear deed.
We may just...
Uh, Mr.?
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question about that? So, how much are the leans on that property?
Well, I mean, it's just we hold a lien for the revert.
For the revert?
Yes, that's it, yes.
Well, we, I mean, all the time you can make an agreement that upon development, you know, we could, maybe upon, maybe David would know, you could say, when you pull the permits, we release the reverter clause. I mean, there's different things you could do, but you just pull the reverter clause, and there's no urgency to do anything. I don't know, I'm sure there's some kind of thing we could do to say, hey, if you're gonna do this, then we could release the clause. There's gotta be an agreement in place because what's the impetus for them to get it done? And I agree, that's, that locations.
And if we decided to terminate this agreement or whatever, what, what happens with the property? What could we do with it? What would we do with it?
Well, we also have a group of properties that we, we need to have a workshop on that need to be, I would suggest get put on the tax roll. They're buildable, I think we could put affordable housing on it. I think this would, if we did move forward with the reverter, this would go in line with those properties as well.
And just for clarification, it's governed by Florida statute one sixty-six point oh four five one, which is referenced in the resolution. And that does require the municipalities are encouraged to adopt best practices for surplus land programs, including but not limited to, and the one that appears applicable here is ensuring long-term affordability for ground leases by retaining the right of first refusal to purchase property that would be sold at all the market rate, and requiring the version of property not used for affordable housing within a certain timeframe. So that's the statute that was referenced, so that's why you have the reverter in there requiring it for affordable housing is defined by four twenty point oh 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 four Florida statutes. And it's for a specified time period, which was the three years. So under the statute, I don't think the city could waive the reverter if it's being related to a five oh one C three for affordable housing. You'd have to maintain that reverter to be in compliance with that statute.
So the one they build on, we don't do anything with it because they've done it, right?
Well, we can, to help with title, we can obviously file something in the official records that indicates that, that we're releasing the reverter clause, the reverter clause based on compliance. That's the parcel one. And then parcel two, so it's up for discussion.
And I'd recommend we extend it because Mr. McKellen did mention that he's got something working on that. If we do it three years, if he don't, then we take it back.
I got a question, maybe for you or the turn or whatever. So we, we've already extended it, we gave them the time to, to complete the project, am I correct?
Fourteen years, yes.
We gave them fourteen years.
Fourteen years.
So, so you saying they extended it three more years? That, I mean, Mayor, well, we.
Something's gotta give here, we gave them fourteen years, they didn't do it, so three, three more years is gonna really set the.
Apparently you got something working and apparently the location ain't good.
I mean, that.
And they didn't even express, Ms. McKellen has, that it doesn't matter, really matter which way it goes.
Three more years?
I mean, it's, I don't know that we think it's built there, I mean.
Right, so, so that's what I'm saying, so let's go ahead and do it now.
Which makes, we think it's something else too. I noticed last time we had the big workshop that he was referencing, we sold a lot of land, and we had put reverter clauses. And a lot of that's just sitting there not being developed and listed at high market prices.
Oh, yeah.
And so when we get to that conversation about that, these reverter clauses need to come back out of Florida statute on what we want people to build on, because if you don't have a timeframe, I mean, I can think of several right now, we could pull up that's listed six, seven times what they paid for, and they're not interested in developing it. So if, if our point is to develop, because we need homes, obviously, is this reverter clause is a good thing, and I think statute says we should be doing it. Maybe three years isn't right, maybe we just say, hey, maybe we should ask them, what do y'all feel? Can you do it a year?
You know.
So, I mean, I think the main thing is release the one because they complied and did it.
Yeah, I totally understand that, but they give.
And we could exercise this one at any time, we don't have to do anything with it.
Don't do nothing.
We could just leave it and exercise it at any time.
Yes.
But we don't have to call it till we call it.
That's right. I would, I would go for that.
And the process would be to request a quick claim deed back to the city so that the title is cleared in the official records, a refusal to execute a quick claim deed to clean the title up from the reverter clause would probably require a quiet title action.
I would hope they would build it, that would be great. I mean, I don't think we want that piece back, but.
Like I said, it's, it's been hard trying to get somebody. From my understanding, they take somebody over to look at the property, to see the location. Nobody wants to live. I, ever make, uh, Mayor, before you get that motion, I just want to make it clear, are we waiving tapping impact fees? Because that was no end to this agreement.
I believe.
I believe that today.
I don't know that that's part of today, but we passed a resolution on affordable housing, and that would be a question for the attorney because we did, might have been ordinance, I don't know if y'all recall, that was in twenty twenty-one, I believe, about affordable housing. You remember that?
Yes.
I think we should know that information, but we did pass something that says if they qualify for affordable housing, that there was a way you could waive tapping impact. I don't think anybody's ever done it, but, but we talked about that, that was part of the. I can't remember when, I remember it was in twenty twenty-one.
Think about what we were saying again, so we, we gotta waive the fees. Is that, is that?
That's what Mr. McKellen requested.
Well, not the. It may have been, I, I don't remember, do you remember?
What's that?
The tapping impact fees for affordable housing. I know the state had requirements that we passed something, but I, I don't remember. I think we'll need that on the next meeting to come back.
Yes, because, because I was gonna say, if we go to waiving fees, just think about what we're doing. We're gonna be waiving fees all over the place.
I'm not for waiving any of those fees unless there's a rule that says we have to, okay?
So, so please reconsider, when we talk about waiving fees for, for anything, really, just reconsider that.
I agree.
I don't know if that's.
All right. Just since there's still many questions, sounds like we need to pass this.
You want to take it?
Could we remove the one?
Questions.
That they completed?
Yes, yes.
And then just let the other one sit, because we could take the reverter at any time. So I make a motion that we would release the reverter on that parcel one that's at the time labeled six twenty-seven Northeast Washington Street.
Second.
Motion of the second and discussion. It's actually called.
Mr. Cannon, is that the request to the quick claim deed to clean up the title? Is that?
No, that would be for parcel two, this, this would be, we would draft something to follow the official records. So going forward, that five oh one C three knows that that property is not subject to the reverter clause based on.
Do you know it'll come back as a resolution, right? Since we did this on a resolution before, will we bring this back as a resolution for them?
You would need to do a resolution to release parcel one.
So will we bring it back? Okay. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Okay, seventeen special possible action, like Vice Mayor, it served January twenty-four to December twenty-four. Last year, I think I mentioned, Mr. Tino and the conservative staff, I think we got a good job this year. And I'd like for recognition, counsel.
I make a motion for Mr. Hill to be the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Motion of the second and discussion. It's actually called.
That motion would be for Mr. Hill to serve from January twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four, okay? Right, Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes.
Mr. Warren, I always used to say, you didn't lock it enough. Okay, I guess we're down to add, I think the spring grant. And that was Shannon Williams.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Shannon Williams with Gateway Grant Writing and Administration Services. I just wanted to take a moment to bring for the council this spring's grant opportunity. I'm a little late, Ms. Art has already got him to speak. But it's due on December seventeenth, it's a perfect opportunity for the great restoration issue that we're having. And I have attached a draft application for you. And just this first page is just a summary of what the spring's grant is and what I'm requesting from the council. So I don't need a resolution or anything of that nature, but I do need permission to continue to pursue this opportunity for the Gwinnett Recreation Project.
I make the motion to approve the spring grant application for Gwinnett Lake.
Second.
Second and discussion. It's actually called.
As an emergency.
Yeah, under section, I think it's two dash one eighty-one.
Thank you.
I remember y'all said something about that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And are we going to, we'll hand the sign, Mr. Resilience Number, I'll have one handy, that way it doesn't have to come back again?
Yes.
He needs signature to the names.
No, once I finish the draft and give it back to you for you and the city to take a look at, there'll be an opportunity to sign a, a form that's given the consent to, you know, process it through the portal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, thank you. And so did you say you're gonna sign a resolution number?
I'm gonna sign a resolution number two, the next one that's in order, it may actually be one forty-two, but I'd have to double check my records in the office, I did not bring my next one, so we don't have to bring it back.
Perfect.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes, okay. The duty out of twenty is approval of job descriptions for great management, fire, airport, GIS, and customer service department, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, Mayor, this is same as usual, any changes were lined out in red. We're just trying to get approval dates on all our job descriptions.
There is a motion. What about your job description?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the job description for the following that intern manager described.
Second. We got a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Miss Alex.
Okay, those are the job descriptions for great management, the fire department, the airport department, GIS, and customer service departments. Uh, Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
And Mayor Whit?
Yeah. Okay, comments we have, this December the ninth is the Holiday Market downtown, they've been doing a great job with that, so it's good to be out and about there. Saturday night is Christmas Parade, six o'clock at the fire station, usually causes a crowd trying to get to the city hollow here, so we usually meet at the fire station, probably by at least a quarter till. Martin Luther King parade, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And this Thursday is the. Go ahead, Mr. Hill.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, I would appreciate if you could advise your, some of the department heads to represent the city on Thursday night, December the seventh, at the, what, what you call it?
Howberry.
How, Howberry, what, what anyway? The city is hosting a dinner meeting for the Northeast Florida League of Cities, and I would appreciate if I could get the support of my council. Like I say, I'm calling a few, the fire chief, police chief, some of the directors. Excuse me if I don't call you out, but just if you can, Thursday night at the brewery.
Is it seven o'clock?
It's at seven, yes.
Are you cooking?
No, I tried to get Ms. Young, but she.
May I tell the truth?
I just told the truth.
All right, then, other comments?
Well, I, I have a few, Mayor, I see how you ran through comments, like you didn't want to slow down.
You want to get into those dates?
Um, on the, I don't want to wake it back up, but on the, the three percent, and I heard Mr. Jernigan asked the city attorney if they get the three percent raise. Can I get the answer to that? I didn't hear it.
He got a contract with us for a certain rate.
I'd have to look at the contract. I don't remember what it.
Would y'all like me to answer that?
Yes, sir.
Um, it's in their contract that every year they get a three percent on October first.
Regardless of what anybody else gets, it's in the contract.
That's in the contract?
But that's not a problem, that's not a problem.
Wait, we're not gonna go back, we're not gonna address that, that we already addressed. Okay. Um, I have some other questions concerning that. And I'll, I'll, I'll wait, and it may come up on the, the next agenda. Um, but I do want to say, there was another murder on Long Street. And I'm sure we heard Mr. about and say that. And I'm saddened by that. And I, I just. I, I mean, I was lost for words. And the Mariah Fund that's just sitting there, I want to know what has, has any, what have, how far have we gotten through the process of determining how this money is gonna be used? What are their, what's the criteria in such that, because the city needs this?
My last conversations were that they were getting, the application was getting sent to council members for any feedback. I'm not sure if that has been sent to y'all yet, but as far as administration, we're done.
So who holds this information? Who is sending it to the council?
I'm not sure if that will be the clerk or the legal, but I can send it to you today.
That'd be good.
And I mean, we just basically give you some feedback, that way we could bring it to y'all at once, one time with all the feedback and get that process rolling.
Please do that.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, so also I was thinking, and been thinking recently about the programs. Here we are in December, and so if we could have that baby on the next agenda to discuss the two hundred thousand we have set aside and start the ball rolling, because the kickoff's the hardest part, but we need to get rolling now, so, I mean, we're two, over two months into the new year, so let's roll with it, and I know you guys can do a good job with it.
Okay, so with clarification, would y'all like to have a workshop? Or would y'all just like to send me the feedback to include it within the process, the application?
I think a workshop would be very appropriate.
I mean, I know we have one that y'all have been talking about that might be coming up, that might be something to add to that agenda.
I couldn't agree with the workshop.
Workshop, I keep hearing workshop.
We don't want to have too many items on one workshop.
No.
The one thing you can do is you can load a workshop up where you got ten hours worth of stuff, and you don't have the two hours, so. And it doesn't negate the community if they come to talk about one thing, they gotta wait through another thing. So, I mean, I think we might need two workshops.
Absolutely, because I heard this property, we need a workshop on it. And I would like to request that this Mariah Fund be a workshop within itself. I think it's a very serious matter, it, it's, it's very imperative that we use this money in a way that it's going to properly make a difference, and that it will focus on our young people and be used in which, in the manner in which it was set aside. So I would ask that a workshop within itself for the Mariah Fund.
Perhaps we could have on the next agenda, an item to discuss dates for the workshops, and that way we could put it in stone, if, if that would be acceptable.
Great.
I have a question, so the, the Mariah Fund, are, are you planning on using the same policy and application for the other? That's the policy and application that, that I know that you want to send out to them. Or are you wanting to use that same application and policy process for the Mariah Fund?
Uh, feedback I'm giving the council is no.
A specific, we want a specific.
Okay.
Form, form, a specific criteria.
Okay.
For the Mariah Fund.
And then you'll, you'll give us that direction for the workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We will.
So I'll put on the next agenda to set dates for the four.
That's one we talked about, the, the one we have to do for affordable housing property, the one we need to do for, help me now, we talked about several.
Oh.
You got the affordable housing, and you got the.
Yeah, decorum.
Yes.
In the application process for the public assistance.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question. Wednesday night, Wednesday evening, they have an Apex training game, Bill. Uh, we need a vehicle.
They should be.
They got a two-door. We need a vehicle.
I got you.
All right, and you said Wednesday, this Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Early afternoon.
Door's gone.
I think everyone is slated to it, I believe.
Oh.
Everyone needs to.
We might need.
I got you SUV, the traverse.
You're gonna, who's gonna drive?
I heard Mr. Yow was a good driver. God, you're being funny, man. Be a good man. Come on, man.
Even if I have to drive.
Well, wait a minute. Make a motion to adjourn.
Make you to adjourn.
Second.